There you go.
Click a button here, there we go. This is uh. What is today, the twenty seventh of March, it's seven ten P M, it's the Maynard. Zoning Board of Appeals were holding our meeting remote. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes, and I assume everybody looked over those minutes.
Mm hmm.
So I need a motion.
I have a question about the the uh the meeting minutes.
Let me pull up.
There's some missing, I believe there's some misinformation there.
We don't want that.
Um it shows a page as an alternate.
Hang on one second, oh, that would be, that would not be.
Right Brad, I didn't even notice that.
And it shows me as not being the alternate.
Good heavens. Wait a minute, let me open it up in front of me here, one second.
So somebody was doing their reading, that's good.
That's right. Okay.
So are you amending it, Bill?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm amending it as we, oh wait a minute. On the twenty seventh, let's see. Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what happened, yeah, oh, good lord, yeah. Okay, uh so Paige is as vice chair. And Brad is as alternate. Amended as requested.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Meeting of the Maynard Zoning Board of Appeals as amended.
Do I get a second? Jerry seconds. Good, all in favor. Okay, so whoever voted, we all voted one way, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the discussion for the the agenda. Is potential future amendments to the zoning bylaws. And. I think. There there's the one that Brad and all have worked on. And that's pretty much out of our hands at this point, right?
I can give you an update real quick if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So everything has been um. Brad was with us at the um planning board meeting. Uh there were very few, mostly grammatical, a few grammatical tweaks. Uh but um. All the articles have been submitted and are on the warrant as such. Um the one question I had for the board. Um and then I kind of thought better of it because your list, I I listed you as kind of like um the genesis of it anyway. Um I would normally ask for uh like a vote of support. Or, you know. Just to kind of strengthen the um. The the vote, but I think. In this case, because. You know, we're listed as this is where it originated and explains that in the report, it's probably okay. Uh we've presented this item to the FinCon. We presented it to the E D C. Economic Development, and we also have presented it to the Cultural Council. And the reason the Cultural Council was important for this was because. They oversee the cultural district. And 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 everybody has voted uh to support this. So I I hope that um. Everybody's worked hard on this, Brad. Um and and Bill Crown Shaw from the Planning Board have been really um. Thoughtful, and I think honest to God, I I I mean, I think Brad would feel the same, I don't know how we could make it any tighter. I mean, at this point, we're just kind of like moving, you know, the a semi calling around. And this type of thing, but but everybody that. Understands it, likes it. Um that leads us to the um question of presenting it at the um. Town meeting. And uh we're gonna put, we we did a really uh. I guess kind of more of a Q and A type. Uh PowerPoint, you know, kind of anticipating what the. Type of questions you hear. Were uh and um. The idea is to. Edit it down a little bit more, but I will have Chris. Arsenal at the chair of the planning board present it. But um I think, right, you know, before we should discuss, Paul, we should discuss, maybe, um, you know. If we want to just um. Decide about a a a formal endorsement from this board to. We have time, but I think it. You know, something to chew on, you didn't really discuss it, and I kind of thought it was implied, but. You know, strength in numbers and.
So when you talk about it, an endorsement, that's just us saying, yeah, we approve it?
Yeah, collectively. So, you know, I mean, cause you know, if um. You know. I don't think this board were at all, because like I said, the genesis of the the bylaw was by them. But if we had two people from the board that came up and said, this is the worst thing I ever was involved with. And you know, that would not bode well.
But we we can put that to a motion if you want, we could. You know, get a get a read on the on the members of the board right now and say yea or nay.
If if you were good with that, I think that would only help, and then I could just say. That the planning board, I mean, the zoning board um took a vote to support the planning boards um. Initiative, you know, their their bylaw.
Well, if if we're if we're the genesis of it, then then we're not supporting. The planning board's genesis, we're supporting them. And especially.
Final product.
Yeah, to then we're supporting Chris to be the the answer person.
Yeah.
Cause I don't want to be the answer person.
We're no plus.
So. I guess the first thing here is somebody make a motion that that we're going to do what? We're going to support the planning board's presentation of.
The the recommendation of approval.
Sounds good, whatever you said. So who wants to make that motion?
I'll move to endorse the planning board's recommendation of approval.
Excellent, we got a second.
Okay.
Jerry seconds. And so uh since we all have smiling faces and hands waving here, all in favor.
Alright.
Right, yeah, Brad too, excellent. So there you go, Bill.
Thank you, I will note that, that'll be cool, I would really um. I'll be excited to get this to vote, it's been a long time coming, you know, we've all worked on it, so.
Yeah. So. I I think that's the big thing in front of us, and then as we talked a little bit last, was it last meeting? I think it was.
Yeah.
We we were talking about trying to figure out how to put something else in front of. Us to consider or give it to the planning board, let them consider it. And I'm trying to figure out what it is we were trying to consider.
Some um regulations for uh gun shop businesses in town.
So. What do we want to do? How do we want to handle that?
Well, um Bill sent. Us copies of Littleton's, Newton's, and Acton's proposed. Gun shop regulations and um. Cause we're pretty sure they're coming to town. And. So I think it's, you know, the idea of getting something in place to regulate. Um where, for instance, you know, that. How close they can be to a school or a playground, uh whether or not they can be in a residential building can. You know, that they can't. One gun shop owner can't lease space to another gun shop owner, that there can't be. Um particular signage, that type of thing. Cause right now we don't have anything.
No, just for the board's um uh edification, uh we did. Have a couple of gun shops come to town, one we we did turn down on the basis of zoning. Um and the reason was because they were manufacturing. And they wanted to go in an area where manufacturing was prohibited. But um it it could be that. Um one that just falls under normal retail a as it stands right now, could come in and locate any place where general retail is um. Allow.
I I have a quick question, I guess, statement in. Regarding this, cause I was not involved, I don't remember what went on regarding. Uh cannabis and pot shops.
Yeah.
Um so. Would this not be somewhat similar? Because. You you can't put a pot shop, you know, next to the fallow school and you kind of do. There's certainly you can't do with that, so are there similarities in 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 those restrictions that we might? Garner for you know, a a gun shop of some sort, I I don't know.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, that that was the reason uh the planning board did do that uh particular with with cannabis. Uh my opinion, uh Jerry, yes, they could. The the, a lot of the, a lot of the um restrictions that were placed on cannabis. For example, the dis- well, the distance of the school is by the state. Um the um. Opaqueness or the, like, you can't have things in the window. You know, you couldn't have like products in the window. Uh that was all by the state. This board or or this this town, our town, what um. Basically. What I would consider general safety restrictions on not the, not that would be unique to guns. It was more conservative traffic. And loitering was a big concern for, you know, people thought were really concerned about loitering. Which we haven't had, but we did put safeguards in place.
I I I have a question.
Hmm.
Um. When looking at the uh what the town of Littleton had proposed and kind of acting had proposed. And I believe Newton looked at. Um they had different distances.
Yeah.
Uh one of the towns had a thousand feet and another one had five hundred feet.
Newton is uh stricter about that, Newton was a thousand feet and Littleton and uh Acton, I think, were both five hundred feet.
Okay, so Bill said that 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 was, the distances were regulated by the state.
Uh cannabis, in cannabis, where.
Oh, in cannabis, oh.
Right, right, cannabis, right.
Alright.
Yeah. So I I mean, some. Thing, I I don't think I read all the way through Littleton's, cause it seemed really long, but then looking at the other two, they. They seem more compact, but. Like things like um they have to videotape. The um point of sale and they have to keep those videotapes for six months, you know, in case the gun is involved in a crime. Yep. Um not locating them in a building that's got a residence in it. Um it's just like a lot of really. Um. Sensical. Things that should be in place. In my opinion.
Oh, um can I go back to just the distance for a a moment?
Sure, yeah.
Um. To put it into perspective. Um the distance from the McDonald's downtown to the C V S. Is about a thousand feet. So if the gun shops were to be. Supposed to be a thousand feet apart. That would pretty much. Wherever you put a gun shop in the downtown. Would pretty much keep it at one gun shop.
Mm hmm.
I don't know about other regulations in terms of um. I mean, I know as far as a home-based business, a gun shop is not allowed by state law. Um so there's regulations involved with that already. Um. Uh but I don't know about gun repairs. And things like that, and you know, how how that. How that fits in, cause I don't, I don't know the regulations about that at all.
Mm hmm.
Well, the state, you know, the state has uh and and uh the case of uh guns and firearms. Um there's also some federal regulation that impacts it. Um. I think. That most of the local municipalities that we're discussing. Have taken the approach that um. You know, it's at the uh the best way to regulate it was through a special permit use, so that anything. You know, assuming it was allowed in a district. Um. Anything would require a special permit prior. To. Being able to open, but like we do with cannabis and their overseeing body is the Cannabis Control Commission, it's a state, so like, you know. Um with liquor and with with cannabis, like if if this board, for example, uh approved a um. This alcohol establishment. Or a cannabis establishment, you know, that would all be contingent upon. The Cannabis Control Commission or the uh alcohol um. Whatever the the their name is on the local level. And then, you know, we, you can make it tighter, you can't make it looser.
So is there any state guidance on that? You know, you talk about cannabis and and alcohol.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anything similar to that for? The things we're discussing?
I haven't seen anything for local municipalities. Um I really, the only thing we have left, I think. Is either outright prohibition. Or uh regulating of um. You know, by special permit, uh I don't, to be honest with you, um I have never. Um I've had some other uses that were controversial. And that we have prohibited and end up in, you know, suits about, I've never had that with guns. Um. But um I've never quite had this situation either like this.
Well, the only other thing that I can think of, I don't know if there's any comparison, is to porn shops. Right, because that's another regulated area.
Yeah, yeah, that was one I dealt, I dealt with that, and I dealt with a big box stores, which is what I was thinking of, the other one. So, yeah, yeah, porn porn or um, you know, adult entertainment is the.
Yeah, that's.
Right, yeah, yeah, that you can't, you know, that's the thing is that. In that case, you couldn't outright prohibit it, so. It was, it was considered a First Amendment issue, and the idea was, okay. This is allowed. You can't prohibit it through zoning. And just say, it's not allowed here, it's 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 a free speech. So you had to be able to prove that, yes, it's allowed here, it's allowed here, otherwise you're just asking for, you know, litigation. In the case of um. Um. Like, I'm trying to. That's, that's a hard one, because that that is the big use, but that that works on the First Amendment. The Second Amendment where they with with the guns was people took. Different approaches to it, and there were many different interpretations of what. It meant. And so in the end, like so far, all we have done here is said that. At this point, if you're gonna just sell a gun. A firearm, uh you know, it's it you, it's top-down, you have to. Be in compliance with the the federal and state regulation, but as far as zoning code is concerned, it would go where you could put retail. But the fellow that came in, right after we started this discussion. Um. They assemble them. And um. In my experience, um with assembling. Um. It it can have other consequences. And uh and so in this case, the. The Building Commissioner felt that, well, that's light assembly, and that's prohibited here, and that, you know, that was that, but it's a situation we could run into again.
It it looks like both towns, both Newton and Acton. Um. You know, require video surveillance to be installed. To monitor uh.
Mm hmm.
Like the parking areas, the entrance, exit. Uh this. Point of sale, that type of thing. Uh. I I'm guessing that what we'd have to do is go through like all three sets of them and. Pick things that. Makes sense for us. Given the size of our town and the fact that we can't just out and out ban it, but.
Right, and and, yeah, I think that's true, and and what are the goals of the, what are the goals of the bylaw, you know, that makes.
I don't want to see eighty gun shops in town.
Understand.
That's my goal.
Say that about.
How many, how many gun traps do you want to see in town?
Don't get, don't go there with me. But I don't want, you know, Littleton had eighty in one building.
Right. So right now in Maynard, you can uh you can go to C V S and get your drugs. Then you can walk across the street and to the pot shop. And get some more drugs. You can walk around the corner to the liquor store and get some more drugs.
Right.
So. You know, you walk down the street a little more within a hundred yards, and maybe you can have a gun. And buy a gun.
That's after you go to the drugstores.
Right, and and the pot, and the pot shop, and the liquor store.
Yep.
But also.
And the bar.
I mean, is 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 that? Is that why, I mean, do we want to add guns into the mix that we already have? I don't know.
Well, if you want to limit.
Doesn't seem to be the smartest thing in the world, but, I mean, people should be responsible, you know, with. You know, their uh C V S products and their liquor products, and I don't know about their. Uh cannabis products. Um and hopefully they're responsible with their guns, but. There's a lot of um drug addicts and alcoholics and, you know, people that commit crimes with guns and. You know, so there's. You know, there's, there's a, there's a large spectrum there.
So if you want to look at it, you know, as you walk down the street kind of thing. In what we have in Maynard. Could you pick out a physical site? A region within some kind of a business district, retail district, where you would allow a gun shop? Is there any place in town that you could, that you would think it'd be okay? Downtown overlay district? Out on the, on the conquered end of town? I mean. Where where would it fit? Cause if you had a location that you would accept it to be in. Then you could make a zoning district for it.
Well, I think, my, I mean, one thing I'd say, Mr. Chair, is that you. Are you talking about retail, are you talking about gunsmithing and manufacturing, or are you talking about, you know? Um, you know, another use, so I think. I think that would be. Where I would start is like, you know, are you talking, it sounds like you're talking about flat-out retail.
I, well, I I just wanted to approach the topic, however we want to nickel and dime it down to what you're describing, that's fine, but. What occurred to me is we have a street here called Powder Mill. And it was called Powder Mill for a very good reason, because every so often the powder mill would blow up. Because they were making the ammo there. And so is there, I'm just picking on that road right now, but is there a place along Powder Mill? That maybe against the Acton border, I don't know, that that would be useful for. For this, this kind of an activity, whether.
Oh, like keep it in Littleton.
Right, because that's about as far away from the school as you can get.
Exactly. That's.
Well, if you use, if you use the, the thousand-foot rule. Which the other towns have adopted, except five hundred for a thousand-foot rule, uh away from schools and daycare centers. There would be no, I mean, there's a daycare center in the in the mill. There's a daycare center on Glendale Street. So a thousand feet from there would pretty much encompass the whole downtown business area.
Yeah, so to me, the.
Didn't want it there, you could put that rule in. You know.
I'm just curious. Yeah, what? Sorry, let's say no, go right ahead, no, no, go ahead. I was gonna say, I'm just, I know the last meeting we had, we, this wasn't necessarily on agenda items, so we. We didn't really discuss this in detail, but I'm just curious in terms of what we're hoping to get out of. Tonight, um if this is just more to take everyone's temperature, or if the outcome is to sort of come up with the next steps. And so a plan, uh if we want to address this, then what what's the next best step to make this move forward?
Yeah, that that's the, that's the uh the big question page, and and I've been struggling with that too. Um. Because is is it the the piece of steel? Or is it the little cartridge that you put in it, you can't have one without the other and have a problem? And and what is it we want to do with it? Um. My, my feeling, and I I've expressed it to a few of you in the past, is, yeah, it's a big frickin' problem, but. What can we do that puts a dent in it? And I don't know what we can do to put a dent in it. Because you can go anywhere to, in in, you know, like you got the big box stores that that sell these things, sell ammunition to go with it. So what what can we do that's any different? That has an impact? Now, I don't know.
Well, we cannot become what Littleton was. Have there been any conversations with the planning board, Bill, or have you approached the planning?
Yes, yeah, um, yeah, I should have, it's, yeah, it's a good point, Paige, I should have kind of prefaced it with this. The planning board understands the the the. Concerns. They asked, um, the reason we, they wanted to put the brakes on this temporarily, the discussion. Um and not bring it to this uh town meeting was because of the concern over the um. The uh home occupation, and they thought they that the hands were full enough with that, and it'd be something for the next planning, uh next uh town meeting. They didn't want it, they didn't want to do anything to jeopardize that.
But they're um open to working on this for Fall Town Meeting?
Yeah, I I think, I think as as soon as um. I think, I can't say for sure, but my my. My. Impression is that they're totally open to it, but they're like, wait a minute, we're getting our, you know, cause they are getting, you know. A lot of of feedback about the home occupation, and they felt it's just too much. And we can get the home occupation done, then we'll talk about it, but but Chris, um, the chair. Chris uh really asked, he said, I don't want to try to do it on this one.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, which, you know.
So let's, let's go back to Paige's question, because.
Yeah.
If, once we have. A focus, maybe we can start dealing with it. And so. If if you would. Rephrase that page or say it again, so that we can respond to it as to how we want to proceed.
I don't really remember what I said. Good thing we're recording it.
Yeah.
That's true.
Careful what you say.
It was something about our temperature or we were gonna.
Right, yeah, I was just wondering what the purpose of tonight's, what we were hoping to get out of tonight, if it was more to take everyone's temperature on this issue and and figure out how we felt as a board. Um or if you wanted to take some, what's the next actionable steps maybe that we could take if we desired to. Uh what those might be, and it sounds like maybe we. Decide whether or not we would all like to, maybe we take a vote of the board to see if this is an issue, we'd like to work with Bill and the planning board to pursue, and then sort of figure out what the next best steps are. To do that, if that's where we land.
I. Yeah, I I'm struggling here because. Of the timeline. Because, you know, the the pot's already been stirred with Littleton doing whatever they did. And so now you've got these. Folks stirring around looking for a new home. And by the time we. Figure out what it is we want to not have in town. They will have already landed somewhere. So how how do we proceed? If the goal is to slow down this group of eighty from moving into town?
I suppose you can put a moratorium on any gun shops while we work on legislation.
We, how can we put a moratorium on it, we could, they they would follow, they would follow the rules that already exist.
I don't think we can do that, you know, at this point, my, well, the board's options, there's three options. The board, because this isn't a a a chartered board. This board has the authority to just go ahead and move forward with. Uh their own zoning.
Mm hmm.
And amendment. The second is, they can do like we did. The second is, they can do like we did with the, uh, home-based businesses and we, uh, cause the planning board ultimately has to place these things on the warrant and, and vote to approve or not approve the recommendation for them. Um, they could do the same as we did with the, um, with the home-based businesses. Um, and, and, you know, ask the planning board if they'd be interested in working with us. Or, three, there could be a citizen petition. Um, that would come forward, which I think needs forty signatures. I don't think there'd be much of a problem with that. Um, but none of them skirt the timeline. None of them are exempt from following, you know, chapter forty-eight for the procedure to get a, approved, so the, and I'll be honest with you. This is gonna stir up some stuff. Um, and, and sometimes, my experience with this has been that it doesn't necessarily come from where you'd expect it. I've had, uh, different things where, you know, it could come from other places even. But it was, it, it, it is, um, it is different than changing a setback.
So, let me throw out a crazy idea. As we debate this and review the, the notes from the other towns, what's the state's pulse? And we have a representative supposedly representing us down there in Boston. I don't know who it is right now. But there is somebody there. And so maybe we invite them to our next meeting.
Is that Jamie?
I, I was gonna say Jamie, but I'm not sure.
No, does, Jamie's our, our senate representative.
I don't care.
Yeah, Kate Hogan is our, um, our, uh, House Representative, I'm sorry, uh, Jamie's our state senator.
Okay, but, you know, you got both, both sides, I don't care which side we work on. But to, to, cause this is best done at the state level, is my feeling. And if we can, you know, find out what their ideas are and how they would like to proceed, if at all, before we go down a rat hole of our own. Cause we're one of three hundred and fifty-one things, towns and municipalities like this. And if they can nip it in the bud and control it better in the state level, why not do it there?
We have time, Mr. Chair, because, as I said, all these other, uh, all the other options that we have still have to go through a town meeting. So if the, if it's the board's pleasure, you know, I could invite, um, I could invite our, our rep, our senator, and I, I don't think we get our, 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 um, federal rep here, but, but, um, we certainly, I think, could, could, um, I have a good relationship with both, uh, Representative Hogan and, um, Senator Eldridge, and I'd be happy to invite them to a meeting. And, um, if that was the board's desire, then I'd say, well, would they be open if the, if they, for next month's meeting, if the, um, representatives were not available on our exact day, maybe we could shift it around a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
But they're not gonna be able to get it done before we have our fall town meeting when we can get it done ourselves. You can't get shit through. Things.
I agree.
Get stuck in committee, they never.
But it's, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Leslie, but whatever we come up with on the local level, I don't believe will work very well unless we have state support.
Well, Littleton did it, they passed theirs.
Did it work? Did they do anything?
Yet they passed it at their town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're passed.
And, and the value of that, the, the eighty businesses had already been kicked out? I mean, I, I looked at it and I don't understand where a bylaw would be effective for controlling the proliferation of these, of these weapons. They're still gonna be able to get them whenever they want.
Uh, well, I, I understand that, and I don't disagree. However, uh, where it would, I would look at it the same way as the way we limit, um, any of the other, uh, uses that are limited. It gives a individual site-specific review to every application. And, um, in the case of Littleton, not knowing any of the players, and I don't, I, but there were, there were allegations, and it may have been proven by now, or may not have been, may have been disproven, but that there was illegal, you know, some act, illegal activity had occurred. Um, so in that case, um, putting in, if we, if we decided like, all right, the fall town meeting, at the least, we wanna have a special permit review for any um, applications, uh, I think that would, it's minimal, I, granted, but I think that is a first step.
Building on that, there's a special permit requirement. I can imagine us writing down a list of five or six or so items that that special permit would have to check off. You know, the video cameras, the location, number of patrons or at any one time, whatever. We could do that in short order. We could put that together as, as a bylaw draft in a month or two and get that forward. Is that what we're looking for?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Bill, what does Stowe do? Because there's a gun shop right on our doorstep, right across the street from Strauss Plaza. Great Road Firearms, I was just wondering, what kind of policy do they have over there?
Honestly, honestly, I don't know, because it was not a, uh, um, you know, was not i- in the recent legislation. I mean, there's gun shops over in Massachusetts. Um, typically, um, anything I've seen has required a special permit. But I can't say that's the case for Stowe. I, I'll, I'll find that out, and I should have known that. Um, but, um, I don't know.
Oh, yes.
No, it's a good question. You know, and, and the other question comes when I, you know, in my, my other experience that I've had, you know, there was things like, for example, there was a, what they call a gun show exemption. And, and that was a nightmare. Because, uh, no matter what you did, if it was at like, almost like a flea market setting, like our farmer's market. There would be stuff for sale that was should have been regulated.
Hey, that's exactly the way it was when I lived in Arizona, in Phoenix.
Yeah.
You, you could buy any gun you wanted at a flea market.
Well, that's what I'm trying, I was trying to tip toe. And you could buy the conversion kits, that was the biggie.
Right.
And, and, um,
So I see two things happening here. One is, we could draft a bylaw amendment. You know, and Bill's idea of a special permit was a bunch of requirements. And we could invite the, the state people to sit in with us and sort of buttonhole them as to what they're gonna do on a state level, if, unless they are already doing something, tell us. And is, does that satisfy you, Leslie, if we, if we draft a, of a, a special permit? Bylaw amendment?
Well, I know that Jamie Aldrich, Eldridge is, um, wanting to rein these in. I've been told that anyways.
Yeah, he was involved in the, um,
Well, I think to Paul's point, Paul, I, I, I agree to a hundred percent. I think we can certainly draft something, we don't need a planning board. We may end up with the planning board, we may end up coordinating with them, and they present it, but at a minimum, nothing prevents us from developing, uh, what we think is the right thing to do, and to invite Jamie and Kate and whomever else to our next meeting, and say, this is what we're doing, this is what we're thinking of doing. What are you doing on a state level, and is there anything that we put or should do together? Uh, that's my thought.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I, I, I have something to say. Um, if Littleton, um, uh, has already passed theirs, Newton obviously has passed theirs, Newton based theirs on, from what I understand, on Wellesley's. Um, you know, meeting or their, their, their bylaws. And Acton is now adopting, uh, you know, theirs, all of them collectively. Do we really need to reinvent the wheel? Can't we just look at what the other towns are doing? And just, and just rubber stamp that and add our little modifications to it? And.
You're speaking like a, you're speaking like a true pro of writing amendments.
That's exactly right.
I think it might come down to just, do we want the thousand feet or the five hundred feet, and then just add in the other?
Right.
As I bar, it's all there.
Exactly, so, and then, yeah, so that, it shouldn't take long if you rubber stamp it, but if you wanna go and start, start over again. And go through what we did with the home-based businesses. It's gonna take forever.
I don't think we need to, yeah, I, I, I think we can, we can snag the good pieces out of the other ones and and just repackage them and say, this is maintenance. Looks a lot like, uh, others.
And the repackaging is important, because, you know, a thousand feet might not be appropriate, because it might limit them from not being anywhere.
Right. With marijuana.
And, and the thing with this, the daycare or other school-related activities is if there is a gun shop, does that mean you cannot build a daycare nearby? In other words, if the gun shop got there first and to put the five hundred feet, does that mean you're outlawing a daycare?
Well, that, that's, that's, yeah, that's an old zoning, um, conundrum, and that's been settled by the courts, and the answer is, uh, you, you know, if you, well, I shouldn't use the expression, but, but, um, there, there is, you can't cite something adjacent to an existing site, and then complain about the existing site.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I figured that was, but I, I just wanted to clarify it. But, yeah, that, that was a classic case, uh, about thirty years ago about the pig farmers in Bolton.
Well, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, I know all about that.
Yeah.
I just bought a house there.
Really?
The, the big farmers got there first.
I didn't know it was there until, uh, the spring came along, when it started melting, and then all of a sudden you could smell everything, it's like, what's that smell? Not on the, uh, on the, you know, on the sale.
So, to move this thing forward, we've been, we've been chatting about it for a little while now. Does anybody wanna take on the, the challenge of looking at these other documents and seeing what works for Maynard?
Well, I'm happy to, since I stirred the pot in the first place.
In favor.
I guess my idea would be to take Littleton's, Newton's, and Acton's, and just like read through them and highlight what seems to make sense, and then we should all like get together, you know, whoever, get together and see whether or not, yeah, the, these are the things that make sense.
I, I would suggest you take it a, a little step further and take the text and put it into one document.
No, well, some of them say the same thing.
Yeah, but whatever that is that you're liking about their versions of it, instead of just highlighting it, grab those key sentences and build a fresh one.
Oh, you don't know what a Luddite I am.
I'll help you honestly, I can help you with it, Leslie.
I am like.
Is, is this a time, is, I'm sorry, is, is this a time we should get somebody from the planning board? To, to join? Uh, as a subcommittee? And, and knock it off quick, and what do you have?
I honestly, Brad, I, my, my impression is that they really wanna wait till after um, town meeting. My suggestion would be.
They don't wanna do anything right now. They, they don't wanna do anything, not even in a, in a subcommittee type.
I don't know, I, I'll ask them, I'm meeting with them, I mean, I'll be meeting with them next week, I can ask them, um. But in the meantime, I can get Leslie started on this stuff. Um, and I could contact, uh, Senator Eldridge and Representative Hogan and ask them that they could come to next month's meeting with the understanding that if this board, for some reason they couldn't meet on that night, you know, I'll talk to you, cause right now I don't have any public hearings for next meeting.
So, we're gonna have it virtual next month, right? So, so they don't have to drive.
Yeah, that's, the, the advisory came out today, the senate and the house passed it, the continuing for a two-year extension of virtual meetings. But it's on the governor's desk yet, and it hasn't been signed yet, and you would say, frankly, why hasn't it been signed yet, Bill? How hard can it be? It's a virtual, blah, blah, blah. All right, and I would say that the reason is because they attach, they attach it onto the budget. And I'm like, for the love of God, so there's like people's bridges, stoplights, and this, and it's, and then at the end is, oh, and let these poor these poor folks that are volunteering, we'll tell them, so. I was like, cause I was like getting really frustrated, cause, cause I'm trying to place advertisements for next month's meeting. And I'm like, come on, how hard is it? It's like, well, it's not one page, you know, one paragraph. It's forty-two pages with, you know, fifty million dollars for this YMCA and this and.
We don't have line item veto yet?
Huh? No, that's coming up, that's what I was waiting for, line item veto, right?
Yeah.
But anyway, I, I think we'll have it.
I'd, I hope so. I get a nineteen-member school building committee and ten consultants to join in, so there's twenty-nine people right there.
That's our budget. There's the budget, bone.
So hop in your car and drive to the next meeting.
The first thing would be to make a motion to encourage Leslie to draft Jerry, so moves, do we have a second? Second, all in favor?
All right, Leslie. Leslie, I will help you get started with it.
All right, well, I'm out straight for the rest of this week, but I, I will start highlighting.
Yeah, highlight it, the good, the greatest hits.
Yeah.
Bill, do you have a figure, um, maybe from the Marijuana Times that showed what a five hundred and one thousand foot setback from the daycares or schools in Maynard would look like?
I think I do.
Cause I, I think that would be helpful to see what, at our next meeting, if that already exists.
I know that, um, I know that, uh, we couldn't do the five hundred. And the reason is because, you know, we, we had daycares, this was for marijuana. Uh, because it had daycares, it had, um, preschools. And then what, what happened though, there, this is, uh, what ultimately ended up happening. Cause we weren't gonna be able to do it at all. And, and then it was, well, what was in, within five hundred feet would, um, what was in the five hundred foot restriction was K to twelve, and these were pre-K. Now, I don't know why that makes a difference, but it was, it was like, I'll check it out, I'll send it to.
Thank you.
But yeah, we did do that, cause it, for the, those of you who weren't on the cannabis, um, any of the hearings there, that was like, we were like bringing in plutonium. And, 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 and it was like, where's five hundred man, and what's three hundred and, three hundred and twenty, look at this, there's a quarter. And, um, so I have those graphs.
All right.
Good. I think we made progress.
We're sticking it right on the Acton line.
Concord corner, right there.
I think that's the only place. When you look at the town layout.
Yeah.
Maybe we can subcontract it over to, uh, to the Stop and Shop Plaza.
They're working nice with us now, come on.
Maybe put it up on top of Water Tower Hill there.
Yeah.
Right on the town line on Stowe, cause they already got theirs.
Yeah.
It's one-step redevelopment plan, right?
Yeah.
But I, it, it, it's, does this work with you, Leslie? I mean, moving it forward?
Yes, I'm, I'm encouraged that we're taking action here.
What we'll do, Leslie, we'll, we'll go through it, I, I, I'll, I'll show you the, how we've gotten the others set up, it's a similar pattern.
Yeah.
Can, can I just say just one more thing?
Sure. Sure.
Um, it's, it's my understanding that there really is very little foot traffic going into these shops. And that everything in these shops are done online. So they're, they're buying and selling weapons through, you know, um, like Amazon and UPS. And FedEx. And there, there's nothing really going on in the stores themselves, they're just sort of a storefront, an online business. So, I don't know how. How much impact, you know, or foot traffic there is, you know, other than somebody wants to maybe go hunting on the weekend and needs to, you know, get some ammunition.
And then they just go to the dicks to do that.
Yeah, or Cabela's.
Cabela's, yeah. Yeah, because it's, uh, whatever, what is, whatever, Walmart, you know.
And, and so with that thought of, you know, everything being online, what does the videotaping accomplish?
I don't know what eighty gun shops, what it means that there were eighty gun shops in one building in Littleton. And that, that there was a gun sold that, from there that was involved in, uh, shooting.
Yeah, a ghost gun.
Yeah, people that I know that live in Littleton that, that buy weapons and use weapons. Um, they said that there's, they had no idea that there was eighty in there, and they, what they believe is that they're just. Online sales. Because they've been into the building and they've got stuff there and they, there's, they said maybe there's like six where you can actually. You know, open a door and see, see something there. Also, some are just offices or, or whatever, you know, store.
So when is our next meeting, Bill?
Well, yeah, it is scheduled, but you know, a- again, we don't have any, um. Public hearings, so there's a flexibility there. But the next meeting scheduled would be, uh, April. Let's see, twenty-fourth.
So, if we don't have anything for that day.
Yeah.
And we're not ready for, uh, Leslie's amendment.
Right.
Would we have any, uh, agenda for May?
Uh, we don't have anything at the moment.
Nothing's come in from A.
No, I don't have any, I have nothing on the dot for us, which is, you know, after the last two years, it's been kind of unusual.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave the day for April open, depending on. What you can schedule with the, the state people.
Okay.
Right, does that make sense, guys? It would, see if we can get them to talk it through.
Right.
And then, uh. Do I make that into a motion? Let Bill have an assignment?
So moved.
Do I get a second? Leslie seconds, gotta be faster, John.
John was slow to the draw again.
All, all in favor? So, Bill, you're, you're on the hook to, to get coordinated with the state people.
Okay, I'll do it.
Then I need one more motion, so we can go celebrate the rest of the evening.
I moved, we adjourned.
Excellent, John, quick, there you go.
Okay.
All in favor, I guess we're all done, right?
Great, thanks, folks, have a good night.